At seven oh four. If you all rise to the pledge of allegiance.
But the United States of America. For two or something over which it stands with my nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice.
Thank you, everybody. Dr. Willett, acknowledgements.
So we are very fortunate, um, I don't know if you had noticed, we did receive an email about. About the Birch Grove, most recent Birch Grove um. Art show at at the library, and so a number of kids were honored at the library, and I think they had something like eighty. Eighty people came. And so it was a wonderful event, and as you know, we do at this point now work in partnership with the library, so that we have sort of an open art show for them. Uh, each month or every a couple of weeks. So the kids that were honored in um, in the art show this, this year, no, I'm sorry, this month. Uh, were Jackson, uh, Giberson, Gal Reese, Adelson, Adeline Nelson. Kin- Kinsley Susa, Haley, uh, Bize, Bridget Field, Gavin Rankle. Fallon Rusi, Lucas Sandy, Riley Sevillow, Henry Jarorski. Lila LaRoca, Dashkina Carth- let me see, locked out here. Okay, Dashkina Carthick, uh, Henry Walling, Logan Sianti, Hadley, and Hadley Prebank. Prebank, um, and so they were honored at the library for their artwork, uh, and like I said, like maybe eighty kids came, pretty amazing, so. There was, um, as they come up, I'll post them on the dashboard, and any of us who want to go can go and kind of see. Um, see each of these art shows as they come up. So it was very successful, congratulations to these kids, uh, and they did a fantastic job.
All right. Did your second one?
So also just wanted to give the heads up, although we'll be doing it more formally soon, uh, Andrea. Uh, couldn't was the candidate that uh, got the job at T I S for assistant principal, so. We're in the process of onboarding, her she'll start probably around March seventeenth, somewhere in that zone. You know, have her kind of come to more of a formal visit at that point, um, but we just, uh, just finalized that, so she's. She, as you remember, the board had interviewed, um, and she was selected, so she's, uh, she's excited to come. Uh, we're excited to have her, and I just wanted to formally announce and let you know that she, she accepted that, she joined us.
It's wonderful.
That is great.
Congratulations. All right, do we have any additions to the agenda? We'll entertain a motion to approve the January fifteenth special meeting, January twenty second and February third special meeting minutes. Motion, second. Any discussion? Dan.
I'm staying.
Dana.
Bye.
Ken.
Hi.
And, hi, Bill, hi. Brian, hi. Renee.
Hi.
Jayden, bye. Katie.
Hi.
Right, motion passes, thank you all. All right, public participation, excuse me, the members of the Talon Board of Education. Welcome members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the board and the administration may respond to comments during points of information. However, in consideration for those in attendance. And in an effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow-up discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting setting. Uh, if you are online and would like to speak, please raise your Zoom hand if you're in the room. Let yourself be known, as always, please start with your name and address for the minutes, and we will give you your two minutes of time. Again, if you are online and would like to speak. Feel free to raise your Zoom hand in the room, raise your hand. Seeing none, we will close. Um, public participation. Mr. Secretary of Correspondence.
Yeah, we had approximately thirty emails, by which were. Calendar related, the remaining were related.
Bless you, sir.
The remaining were budget related. That was it.
All right, thank you, points of information, if anybody from the board might then speak.
And none student representatives, you two get to speak.
All right, uh, so course registration for juniors is due this Friday at two P M, juniors get first say in courses, so. Freshmen and sophomore freshman registration will be due later in the year, but if you are a junior. And you want your courses to be picked, then I recommend you do that at by Friday at two P M.
Also, prom committee's first meeting will be this Wednesday, February twenty sixth, and we're on fifteen, two P M, show.
Tickets for our spring play Haiti's Town will be on sale on, up for sale on the fourteenth. Um, and the dates of Haiti's Town are elusive and will be announced next meeting.
Also, um, on March seventh, the senior class is hosting a dodgeball tournament, it's for all grades. You have teams of seven, ten dollars per person, and there will be a prize for the winner.
And every year, the two managers of the school store write a thirty to forty page report. Documenting different aspects of business related to the school store, and they send it into DECA. In order to get nationally recognized as a DECA school store, our school square did this. With managers Ashby Shaw and Audrey McCowan, and just recently, we were approved to the gold standard by DECA. Uh, we are officially a DECA school store again, and we have two tickets to nationals to further argue why our school store is the best, and we hopefully get on stage. Any questions, comments, or consent?
Said it before, but I'll say, sorry, I'll say it before, but I'll say again, congratulations, that's a lot of work, so you know, you have all the credit in the world for. For getting that gold standard, so congrats, and to you, Ashby, who, who did a great job putting, uh, helping put together the, uh, practice competition a few months ago, so. So Audrey and Ashby, well done, congratulations.
I just wanted to say, I just, uh, received a note that the graduation was decided that it would stay in. House rather than be at the yard roads. I just really want to commend the students who really, who had the idea to have the graduation of the yard goats. Had ideas of how to fund it, um, and I want to commend our administrators for allowing the students to do that, to put out a survey. To ask parents and students where they would want the graduation, I just think that was. That was done really, really, really well, so, um, I'll be happy to see you at graduation at high school, but. Great job working, working that out.
Yes, um, that's what should we do at the school store, that's really fantastic, you should be proud, and I know, I like the. T H S school store, so, uh, but it's a lot of work, as Jayden was saying, that that gets put into that, so, um, you know, cheers to you and the team that made that happen, that's really awesome. Um, and then I know it's all grades for the dodgeball, but like, can there be a Board of Ed sign up?
Let's go.
All I gotta say is, we win.
Final note, I completely forgot, our, the Talon High School open house is tomorrow, um. So, so, you know, parents, go meet your head teachers, it's a lot of fun, go to the school store, which will be open, we love selling you things. Uh, there's a lot of fun merchandise that is available and very reasonable prices, I'd like to say.
Do you want to list some of those things?
That's of course, absolutely, uh, our most popular item is crew necks, I have two of my own, they're very comfortable, great material, twenty bucks. Cause we're having a flash sale, twenty percent off. Just one young, we have scarves, we have hats, so many kinds of hats, we have dad hats, we have beanies, we have winter hats. Um, we have multiple different kinds of scarfs as well, we have t-shirts, class color day, big deal at our school, we have class colored day t-shirts. Anyone can get a t-shirt, you can get a t-shirt, you can get a t-shirt, Dr. Willett can get a t-shirt, everything is a t-shirt.
And you.
We also have mugs for coffee and or water drinkers out there, we have. Hoodies, I also have two hoodies, we have our new groovy line that premiered two years ago, very fun, very festive. Uh, so there's a wide, we have cowboy hats, if anyone likes that western sort of style, we have cowboy hats, they light up. They are great for games, I know all of you go to every single Talon High School football game, the hats are great for that. So just like pop in, peruse, see what's up, and it's a great time.
What's the dad hat?
So a dad hat, that's a great question.
I used to call it a grandpa hat, yeah, it's the one that snaps.
Oh, it's just down.
Like a derby?
Yeah, like a derby. But I called it my, my grandpa's.
Yes.
All right, perfect.
You guys still have the sweatpants or not?
We do still have the sweatpants, we have sweatpants and we have pajama pants, so, a lot of options.
I want to, I'm just gonna give you like a check, who said, hey, next meeting.
All right, all right.
Nineteen.
I'll bring some merchandise, but unfortunately, you all know I love budget meetings, you all know I love talking about them. Unfortunately, I also love not being, not having to turn in assignments late because I get home at ten o'clock. So I need to go, and Sarah does as well.
Yes.
But we are sending. We are sending our greatest arguments to you, um, and have a good day.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Dana, I like your idea about a Board of Ed team.
Right?
I think we should, uh, see who we need to get in touch with.
You might need some merch for your.
Enter a Board of Ed team.
Want to find out why Dana renamed the dad hat to grandpa?
My grandpa used to wear the hats and so it's.
All right.
We can, if you can dodge a wrench, you can dodge a ball, that can be your training, right?
Absolutely, all right, media liaison report.
Curriculum, we haven't met this month.
All right, communication.
I haven't met this month.
Policy.
We had to post a lot of things on.
Fair enough. Negotiations.
We had our first meeting.
Hey.
Been excellent, first meeting, that's really all we can say about negotiations meeting.
F F C.
We're in next week, so, what next? Just to clarify, policy meets later this month though, right, I thought I saw it on my calendar, the twenty sixth, right, policy? Later this month?
The end of the month.
Twenty six, yeah, something like that, so we do have one coming up.
Okay, I have one next week. No, he didn't forget, he was looking at his notes, he was taking.
Non-verbal communication.
All right, thank you. Uh, Chair Report, uh, I do not have one, so. Moving on. And absolute favorite, Dr. Willett, monthly financial report.
Okay. So as you know, the monthly financial report occurs typically at the beginning of each month, the first meeting of every month, at this point, um. Here, there's an available balance of six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars sixty-one cents, which is sort of one point five two percent, uh, as. As of the end of January, and as you know, the monthly management reports are usually for the, the month prior. Um, I'll give you some of the highlights, I'm just trying to get all the stuff up for the, for the watching. Um, salaries are, uh, progressing as we would expect them to at this time of year, overtime. Uh, one thirty is over budget due to, uh, the need for custodial subs, and some of these things we talk about kind of monthly, they, they stay pretty much. Um, in that trend as, as I've mentioned, so each time, you know, I report on it, a lot of these will be the same. Um, codes one thirty to one thirty-nine are for overtime, uh, we still have some summer maintenance and custodial aspects, that's object one thirty-six and one thirty-seven. Um, and custodial sub codes one thirty-nine, so fiscal year twenty-six, this account is going to be moved to one twenty to one twenty-nine, those series of numbers, so just as a heads up on that. So you'll, you know, um, there's kind of a reorganization of the lines there. Uh, overtime line for teachers, extra duty has also been overspent, and on, at this point, you know, when teachers do things like plan field trips and things like that. Um, they're typically going beyond their workday to do that, and, um, that, that does require compensation for them, stipends, um. And as we mentioned before, that's over, there's, uh, stipends that are special education oriented. Um, therefore, uh, leap and semester schedule, um, things that are needed, so that, that's driving it. Also, we mentioned the V G P transportation club that we've discussed, um. And, uh, that, those related costs, um, there was also a shift in girls' basketball, if a person became an assistant coach, and that, that was a stipend. So those are a little over, health, life, and disability. Code two ten is over by about fifty-four, it's gone up since last month, twenty-nine, it's going to continue to, to, um, change based on vacancies, retirees and things like that. Professional education services code three twenty is over one sixty-one, last month it was eighty-seven. Um, we talked about how that more or less is going to be due to special education funds, um, typically will cover what we know is coming. These are going to continue to change due to special education needs throughout the year, and so you can see these lines fluctuate a bit. But that is up, and contracted services, uh, is another thing that will cause that to be over, contracted services is covering the psych vacancy. And as you know, we're, uh, trying to find a job, a psychologist for Birch Grove, and, um. You know, we, we and like twenty-six other districts are trying to find one right now, so, very competitive, and we had to contract services, so we have a contracted, uh, psychologist. Just working there, and that does run that line over. Um, you know, there'll be some balancing, as we've talked about, some, some lines will bounce other lines, so that we're not spending on the psych position, but we are spending on the consultant that come out of two different lines, so there'll be some balancing there. Also, para contracted services, because we could not find paraprofessionals locally, we contracted with a, um. Outsourcing agent for a paraprofessional, and, um, so that now is a cost, it's been covered about sixty thousand. Tuition code five sixty is over by eighty-six, last month it was twenty-two, uh, as, as we've talked about. For this can swing quite a bit, can be drastically changed. Based on, um, specialty enrollments and tuition, um, that type of thing, as things change, that line will change with it. Um, and that's, basically, that's the flyover of, of those things, um, I did want to mention, I think, Mr. Thompson had mentioned, um. The textbooks, last month, um, I went through, um, and talked to the staff, there's about a hundred and. There's, there's almost as much as, as there is there that's about to be expended in a series of lines, so I, I can, um, describe that those are. At our F F C meeting next week or something, but there's a whole series of things that, that, um, are being renewed, some of them are subscriptions, things like that, and it's, it's almost done. So that's coming, it's coming in the next, coming in the next couple of weeks, like months, so it's definitely going to, you know, push that down, you'll see that line change significantly within the next two months.
Uh, yeah, okay, thank you, I just thought, if we had some extra funding there, that we can potentially save, but it sounds like not, so, all right, thank you. Questions?
Yeah. When you were talking stipends, you had mentioned assistant coaches, do assistant coaches get paid?
A, that, yeah. Yep. Not that, there's volunteers that volunteer to coach, but there's, there are official coaches that get a stipend, and there's assistant coaches that get stipend. But then there's also volunteers, so.
So if you don't have a paid stipend assistant coach position, and a teacher wants to do it. Are we contractually obligated to pay them, or do they know it's a volunteer?
So the smoother thing is when a parent wants to volunteer, when a teacher wants to volunteer, there could be, um. There could be an issue there, because by contract, if a teacher's volunteering and a teacher is an assistant. Coach, you know, there, there might be a conversation with the union to make sure that there's no feeling that they were voluntold to do that, or that there was some pressure to do that. Um, if a parent is also a teacher, you know, they could be volunteering as a parent. But, um, there are, you know, official stipends for coaches and assistants, and usually, um. You know, for clubs, it's always posted to teachers first, athletics is a little different in that because the market's a little different, there, people don't necessarily all have as clubs. Many people can pick up the role, coaches, if you don't know basketball, you're probably not going to be able to do that, you know, so if there's a certain group of people that are available. Um, it offered to, to people that are available and knowledgeable, but, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's. Something we'd have to look at if it was a teacher, and we have to make sure that there was no feeling that they were doing it.
So the fact that the, our stipend line item is over, means that. We have a teacher that is filling a role that we didn't budget for as an assistant. Is that essentially what that means?
Well, it could, you, there may be, um, a need to have a coach because there are certain dynamics of a team. With respect to the kids that are on it and certain exceptionalities of the kids that are on there, there can be a lot of reasons why. A assistant coach is added, and it could, you know, there, there's a lot that could be going into that. Um, so in that case, you've got an assistant coach that's then been brought in because there was a need. For it, not determined by the team. So that's how it's done though, is, you know, we look at it from a perspective of the kids, you know, the various personalities and exceptionalities that the team may have. And then you bring in a co, the coaches to make sure that there's going to be sufficient coverage and that they're addressing the needs.
We, we've budgeted that. All head coaches at every level is stipend, correct, I'm assuming.
Coaches are stipends, yeah, and then, you know, we project as best we can.
With the assistance.
But if conditions change, you know, then you might have to take adjustments, and sometimes, um.
What was that line over, fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a significant amount.
It is.
Or for.
Some of it has to do with special ed, some of it is that transportation group, some of it, about six thousand's transportation.
Transportation is in stipends?
Um, that, those transportation stipends.
Yeah.
But that, that also is a good way to do it, because, um. Other ways of accomplishing that would be more resource exhaustive, more, it would be more expensive. So sometimes you, you know, you, you'll do something as a stipend because it'd be, the alternatives would be more expensive than that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? All right. Thank you, Dr. Willett, moving on, so the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six calendar, as you're aware. Policy thirteen sixty requires a policy committee to review that before we can. Review and approve it here, uh, due to scheduling, like I think Jayden and Dana pointed out, that policy committee this month is later than now. Uh, so we, we do have an option that I want to put out and entertain, uh, the board's vote, uh, to temporarily suspend that policy. And allow the board to review and decide upon the calendar now. That, that vote, to do that requires a two-thirds vote, uh, so if that's something that we want to consider, I'll entertain a motion.
So.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Jayden, you look like you're about to say something.
No, I just, I was just going to clarify that we're motioning to suspend the policy, not motioning to accept.
Correct, the, the schedule right now. Should this vote pass? Right. And then we would address this agenda item as normal, right? Discuss, deliberate, if it does not pass, if this vote does not be passed. Then the board cannot look at this item, so after policy meeting, we move it to the, the next meeting.
You got it, okay.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, just, I just want to clarify, we just said the episode, a no vote, we will not, uh, take this up this evening, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'll, I'll say this as to why I'm in favor of sus- suspending it, I, I, I think one of the things we talked about last meeting are the benefits of getting the schedule out as soon as possible for families, and so. Um, you know, just, just before I submit my vote as to why, as to what, um, I hope it's, you, you can understand. The sooner we get this to families, then we're going to be waiting until I think our next policy meeting is, I want to say the twenty, I think you confirmed it, the twenty-sixth. Um, our next meeting after that, I couldn't tell you it went off the top of my head, but that's about a month, you know, it's another month we're waiting for, um, families to, to, you know. For it to be solidified for families and, and staff as well, so, um, I think the sooner we get this approved, um, or just at least discussed, so that people are aware of where the discussions are leading. I think the better for the public and better for families and staff, so.
Hmm, thank you. Other discussion? Dan.
Miss Hatt's gone through policy already, once, like, not the full discussion, then this, this got kicked back, correct?
This down.
Yeah, got kicked back from our previous Board of Ed meeting.
Did it, did you actually meet on there?
Cause.
I thought I heard that you said you didn't.
No, we didn't have the second, we didn't have. We didn't have the discussion last, on the last week agenda, I thought we had a discussion on this and we had it at the, and it was kicked back from the Board of Ed meeting and put back on our second.
No, no, as long as policy committee has reviewed it, then this is.
Dr. Willett, did we, cause didn't we review it and it got kicked back to us from the last Board of Ed meeting, or am I thinking of last year?
No, I, I think, didn't we, didn't we have some agenda in the prior meeting?
It wasn't in the prior agenda, yeah, I didn't think we had.
Okay.
What happened is, I think it got on the agenda, there was a policy meeting scheduled just before the meeting.
Yes.
And because it was just before the meeting, there was an issue, so, right, so I guess, but our meeting went ahead and reviewed the calendar. We knew the calendar, but policy didn't.
Recognition, policy hadn't seen it because they canceled, you know, because it had.
So it's been reviewed or just hasn't been reviewed?
Other discussion? Okay, again, the vote is whether or not to suspend, temporarily suspend policy thirteen sixty. Or renew the calendar. Dan.
Nay.
Dana.
Bye.
Ken.
Bye.
All right, Bill, nay. Brian?
Nay.
Renee?
Nay.
Jayden, bye. Katie?
Hi.
One, two, three, motion does not pass, so Dr. Willett will add this to the next agenda. All right, moving on, policy fifty seventy, sex discrimination and sexual harassment for students.
Yeah, just, um, is that in action?
It is an action, okay, so, um.
Just kind of the fastest way to talk about this is that whenever a presidential administration changes, a lot of times title line and other associated things will change with it. Um, when the presidential administration changed, um, there was a communication to go back to, um, prior title line policy. So we have to go back to title line policy, and we had to do it right away. The policy that represents the previous iteration is the one that is linked here. So we're essentially going back to, um, the policy and regulation fifty seventy, and it's going to be the same thing for forty sixty. That we had in, I think, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, um, that span of time, and so, um. This is really something we have to do, and the, the district has to follow this, even if the board were not to take action on it. Tonight, we still have to follow the, the prior. So, um, so I just, it, it's housekeeping here, but it would be great if we could just get, you know, it officially codified by the board to say, yes. You know, motion to revert, um, to and approve policy fifty-seven is provided in the February twelve, twenty twenty-five meeting in the Board of Education, and these policies are the ones we had.
Dr. Willett, just for clarification, the policy as written, as linked here, is verbatim what we had before?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's one of our prior iterations during the prior. And that, you're approving the policy, the regulation just goes along.
Can you summarize the significant changes?
A lot of the, uh, gender protections, things like that, uh, give those to an earlier version, I'll, of those types. A lot of the gender protections, things like that, uh, give those to an earlier version of those types of things. That's essentially. Yeah. There's uh, you know, there's um. I would say that's probably the fastest summary I can give you, but it's a long policy and there's a lot of pieces to it, so. You know, it just uh, it's a. The prior iteration of um those kinds of recognition, those kinds of requirements or um investigations. Those kinds of criteria. For, you know, what would be considered the Title Nine.
Do you want to review what the Title Nine is again?
Well, Title Nine is generally um, it it's it's a broad thing, but it's generally like sex discrimination. Um, you know, if there's um. Somebody does something inappropriate in the workplace, male to female, male to male, that's the same um. I know. It's, it that's what people most associate with it, which is why the policy's names are sex discrimination and sexual harassment. There's a student version and there is, there's a personnel version. Um, but they are very similar because the the rules are pretty similar. Um, Title Nine investigations are initiated and then we have a, you have to follow protocol and a coordinator gets involved. Um. And then there are determinations made. That. Once you've completed that, you know, send out to the various parties that have been part of the investigation. It it establishes the protocols for doing that. The thresholds which you have to investigate and the protocols to follow when you investigate. And that's essentially what it does for both students and staff. Um, we could have probably a two hour presentation on Title Nine and I don't know. You know, you've seen those maybe in your workplaces, but there's a lot to it, no matter when you put it out there. Uh, this one is our, is the prior version of it and so it goes. And it establishes more of um. It's traditional. But. Understandings of of, you know, gender discrimination.
Um, so I respect that this is a um. A change that's mandatory per law, as you said. But I don't agree with taking any protections away from our children or staff, so. I will respect that it needs to be done, but I will be abstaining from vote.
Dr. Willoughby, what is, has Shipman made any? Posting any comments?
It said go back. To this policy.
Shipman did. Waited in?
Go back.
Okay. Other comments?
Look, you said in earlier version. Earlier version could mean. Last year could mean. Before that, so like.
It's our uh September twenty second, twenty twenty.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you. Same thing that download, gotcha, okay, thank you.
All right. So entertain the motion as written.
Motion to revert to and approve policy five zero seven zero as provided in the February twelfth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Board of Education.
Second.
Discussion? All right. Dan?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Ken?
Same.
Nay. Hi. Brian?
Hi.
Rainy?
Hi.
Ken? And mostly that was abstaining, please, thank you. Katie?
Nay.
All right, Dr. Willoughby, motion passes?
Uh, forty sixty is the same. It's just one place. So as I said, staff, students, it's, and I don't mean same exactly, but it is the same reasoning, same rationale, same reason we have to go back.
And same answer as far as Shipman?
Yes.
Discussion? All right, Dan.
We need a motion.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion to revert to and approve policy forty sixty as provided in the February twelve, twenty twenty five meeting of the Board of Education.
Sorry, Dan.
Discussion? Dan?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Ken?
That's Dan.
Nay. Bill?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Rainy?
Hi.
Ken abstained. Katie?
Nay.
Willoughby, motion passes? Right. Moving on to item N four budget. So just to recap, then uh after last. Last week's meeting? Yeah, after last week's meeting. Uh, where we all took a look at the, what was it, five schema? Through discussions. Put together through through various votes. Uh, what turned out to be schema number six. Which Dr. Willoughby has has put together, sent out to the board and posted. Uh, onto the the website. I believe you're showing it now, Dr. Will?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So again, based on. Uh, on those additions and subtractions discussed. Schema six comes out to be approximately, if I'm reading that right, seven point three four percent. And that includes, Dr. Will, if you could give just a very high flyover of of what six turned out to be.
Yeah, so uh, the Board of Education at its last meeting, February fifth, had a series of uh considerations. Regarding what was going to stay in the budget request, what would be added, what would be taken out. Um, how that landed was that the must haves and prioritizations were um two SROs, um. One social worker, the MTSS programming and pathways programming. Um, from a staff perspective, reductions from the budget increase that would be made would be taking the um four point five pre K staff out. Um, it would be taking out the PPT facilitator, it would be taking out of the budget request, the job coach. Uh, two. Things that were personnel related that were beyond the budget request or part of the current budget are for parent educators. And a point seven FTE nurse. So those were um, you know, part of our current budget. Other things were reduced from the budget um request, the budget increase request. Then there is a series of reductions that the board talked about. Um, most of the ones here, I won't read them all, just uh to save time for you, you know what they were from last time. The things that stayed as reductions were the things that are not uh stricken out here. Uh, things that were stricken out, in other words, if there's a line through it, those are things that the board um. Put back into the request, Lexia, Tech Ed Initiative, Library Media Recorder Stipend, um, all clubs, that type of thing. Um, in the blueprint. Think I put it here, blue text is items also um put into the budget. Um, uh, these are things that were taken from one of the other budget reductions and also reduced out of this one. So you have things that were stricken to, you know, not be reduced, and then you had things that were added in here to be reduced, if that makes sense. So the windows items were things you also reduced that were from one of the other scenarios. So the end result of all of that was a forty seven million eighty, you know, eighty two thousand three hundred and eighty five dollar. Uh, red duck, I'm sorry, budget request at seven point three four percent.
Right, thank you.
All right, so as this is uh part of board action. I want to do this one this time as such. Uh, I want to do one lap around, give you certain time to. Thought. Uh, to give you thoughts, your opinions. I will then entertain a motion to accept a proposal. It does not necessarily have to be this one, it could be this one plus, it could be this one minus, it could go all the way back to option one, it can be whatever that motion is. Uh. And as part of that motion, we'll open it up to further discussion within there. Uh, but that way we can guide. Uh, I also want to point out to everybody that per policy. You have the right to explain your vote as you vote. So.
I thought we did it last year.
You did. You did. I I don't remember last year, I looked up today, so so as we vote, we can explain.
And just from a matter of process. Your last iteration was this option six. So I've created a sheet that I can add to and pull away from that's based on your option six. So I would just say if you want to have, you know, reduce something more or you want to do things with it, I think we can. Work off of that option.
I do that as part of, as part of the motion.
Yeah, we just, you know, I'd like to add this, take this away.
Now, I really have a whole hundred and ten percent. Uh, Thomas said, a thought in my head that we had a conversation in here. That we were not allowed to s- to explain our vote. You voted and that was it.
Ooh.
No.
Ooh.
Yeah, because there was a vote that had, see Dan shaking his head yes as well, so was Bill. There was a vote that happened and then we came back the next meeting. And somebody had brought it up that were, her policy, we're not allowed to, might even been Dana. Um, that we weren't allowed to explain our vote. Yet Dan, Dan.
Comma, however.
He does just say, because I remember Dan had. Uh, mentioned a few things in his explanation. And there was a debate, conversation, whatever terminology you want to use regarding that happened, so Dana couldn't go on.
So yes, he's correct, correct, correct. And yes, the next meeting, there is a policy, the comma, however, is the board chair. In. Um. Override it, if you will. And authorize it, then we have to vote that you could opt override. I don't know the policy because I'm not as good with the numbers as you are, but. There's definitely. Definitely a policy that says you cannot. Play in your answer given the vote. And then we talked about it that next meeting. And then there is also a policy that says you can override. As board chair.
Okay.
So.
But does that require the two thirds vote? Or he just has the power?
Power of one person.
We don't have that answer.
I know, I can look it up. Myself, I've voted several times, that's. I know that, so.
Maybe not while voting, but maybe before. And then we actually do.
Even even when expressing my vote, I and I can't remember what it was, and I'm a little bad with.
So let's do this, sure.
We entertain a motion to allow explanation of your vote. When you vote.
Okay. Thirty seconds to us, yeah.
But I do, this, I, this is like. Beyond talk days, I remember exactly what I was saying.
I was new, I was just listening.
Playing dead. Dan started all this last year.
So in this, in this case, I'd like to motion to accept budget option six as discussed in the February fifth meeting.
But let me go. And then we'll, then we'll take that out.
But if, are we on that agenda?
Yeah, yeah, but I want to let each person have a chance to speak.
But in that case.
And then.
If we're on the agenda item, though, what's stopping a motion from being made?
You're not making a motion, you made a motion, no, you're you're welcome to make a motion. Uh. Do we have a second?
Back in.
Okay. Discussion?
Happy to. Um, uh, I, in my opinion, you know, the. This still, this budget op- option still excludes uh quite a few things that that personally. Um, I would like to see in this budget. Comma, however, I'm using Dana's line. Yeah, I think what this option does, though. Is secures, you know, items like the social worker. Secures a nonsensical item that we should never even consider, like eliminating clubs and advisors. Um, securing um the uh, you know, Lexia program and whatnot. Um, there's smaller items on here that, you know, I think. You know, in terms of searching for grants and whatnot, I'd I'd be happy to discuss that and see what that looks like, but um this budget, this budget option. Uh, supports what I support closest out of all the options we've talked about over the last. I don't know, a month and a half, two months, and so um as of right now, uh, I am in full support, well, I am in support. Of our seven three four option, I'm happy to discuss it tonight with everybody here. Thank you.
Rainy?
You know, I don't. I don't think it's realistic. And. That's unfortunate, but. I just. Yeah, I don't see this going anywhere, so. I don't. See the point really. Of moving it forward.
Brian?
So what what are you asking of me? You ask me, you want me to debate? Are we having a vote on his motion to pass this or?
We're having a discussion.
Discussion on the motion on the floor is to pass it. That's right.
Not questions, just discussion.
Yeah. You don't want to say.
You can ask a question, that's part of you to say, whatever you want to say. Your relations.
Just the question of the motion.
The motion on the floor is to accept this.
No, I don't have any questions on the motion, no.
But but if you have questions to clarify.
I have, uh, I I I know, I I have, I have other ideas and. Uh, I got a whole list of stuff up here, if you, if that's my time, is this our first go around? Are we gonna see if this motion passes or fails and then if it. If fails, come back to me, I have ideas, otherwise I have no comment of this time.
Okay, fair.
Yeah, my comment is this seven point three would have been a great starting point in January. I don't think it's a starting point now, so that's my feelings on it.
Um. My feelings are I support this budget. Um, my reasonings are that. Um. There are some things in here that are non-negotiables for me. Um, I believe that we need the SROs. Um, I believe that we need the social worker. I will not vote on a budget that doesn't include a social worker. I think the emails that we received only back that up, and I believe that the administrators year over year tell us that in the budget community workshop. We often feel like we spend all these time in meetings and the town council doesn't listen to us. I feel like that if we're not incorporating the the social worker as well as the intervention, which is said by every administrator, every time I've done the community work. Budget workshop. Then we're not listening to them. Um, I explained last week my feelings on how. That my belief is in school safety, not necessarily school security. I believe that's multifaceted, and I believe that. Um, actually, I know that the research shows that. Having mental health supports for the kids in school. Is what we need and we do not have the recommended amount of guidance counselors, social workers or school psychologists. Um. Obviously, intervention, like I just said, I think it's incredibly important, it doesn't have negotiable for me. We hear about um the need to um help our students. At these tiers before they reach special education and how it. Allows students not to be left behind. Also, if you do research on MTSS. You'll see that it also isn't other things like teacher retention. Um, it is the best way to educate our students is to be able to help them at multiple levels. Um, and when we do the rounds, every round I've been in that we've looked at the programs. The teachers. And staff have explained how important it is for them to be able to. Work at those levels with our students. Um, and we again heard in our. Budget workshop from the administrators that. Our intervention rates. Um. Are through the roof, they're thirty percent higher than birth mother and any of the other schools. We have a lot of children that are struggling and I think that we. I think the need to invest in this is just. The absolute, so that's a non-negotiable for me. Um, the pathways program is something I believe in, I wouldn't call it a non-negotiable, but I think that it is. Um, the right thing for our district, I think it's the right thing for our high schoolers. Um, currently, you know, my son is on a pathway, I think that. I like the offerings that it provides, the information it provides, I'd love to see it grow. But I'd like to see all the students that are interested in other things um be able to have that opportunity as well. Um, I'd like to retain students that are going to charter schools because they're going to um. They want maybe the art and music path, I love that, willing to let our students decide. What paths to offer and. Again, this is kind of a small investment for something that can grow and be something that's really good for our students and really good for the. You know, excitement for careers, it offers internship opportunities and it's something that we can grow year over year. But we have to start somewhere. Um. I, you know, don't want to, I I don't want to step back on the tech ed initiative at all. Um, I know we've looked at it. I don't want to do that, I don't want to take away Lexia, I think we heard from a lot of parents, I think we heard from parents in this room, but also parents in the emails. That that's an important program um to help our our students with reading. And we certainly don't want to eliminate all clubs and advisors. Look, I don't love. Some of the things that we're letting go here, I certainly don't love the para educator positions. The only reason I'm willing to do that. Because I believe that para educators are the heart of our schools and I believe that they are so necessary and quite honestly, to be very frank, one of my students, one of my kids wouldn't have survived without para educators. I I wish we could hire ten more, I wish we could hire twenty more. Um, the only reason I'm willing to do it is because they are open positions. And. I want to save the humans that are with our kids for as long as possible. So it's not a perfect solution. Um, I know many of you probably don't see it as a compromise, it isn't the full eleven percent. Um, or whatever, the ten point one or eleven point one, it's not. I would do it, to be honest with you. I would, I want them to have everything. And I don't want them to lose anything. This is me compromising. So that's why I believe in this option.
I don't want to. Rehash everything that Jen just laid out, but I think it's super important we talk about school safety. Um, social workers. Um, the fact that we have, you know, missing our schools is. Jen said it's a non-negotiable, I think it starts with the support of our students in that. Uh, MTM, MTSS programming, um, the pathway is again, everything that we kind of put back in there. Um, that question for you, Dr. Will, with the strikeouts, just to be clear. Where it says Lexia, BGP, tech and library stipend, and then eliminate books, clubs, eliminate clubs and advisors. That's back in.
As a reduction.
Yes, it's back in.
You guys removed it as a reduction, meaning it's.
It's cause it's, it's stricken out in the yellow part, which is.
Yeah. Into it as a reduction, anything that's stricken out was taken out as a.
I, I want to make sure, and I see that, I just want to make sure.
No, no, I just, I get it, it's confusing, but, but I tried to do, I tried to.
Right. Um, I take it. I take up my role as a board of ed member pretty seriously and what I'm charged to do. And I'm charged to listen to, and I go to the rounds. I went to, not only the instructional rounds, but then the rounds at the high school, when we go through the budget with our administrators. Um, I've gone to almost every single one of the budget rounds we've had. I missed a couple of rounds in schools just cause of scheduling, part of it, but, um, I try to do. My best to listen to what our educators and our administrators have to say of what's needed to. Help support and educate our students. And as a board of ed member, it's my role to, to, to listen to what our experts are saying and this is what we need. I, it's also my role to insert myself into the school and see it. Through, you know, from the information, like, in being in the school and being up, you know, at those meetings. And listening and hearing what they have to say, they do need, um, and do my best to support those needs. Um, do I think that this number six supports the needs that all of our. Administrators and educators have communicated to us, or? Um, is this a compromise, um, and trying to be realistic? What's the dynamics of what's, where we're at, absolutely, um, but I also think that's. My job to vote on. What I think that our school is based on, what our educators are telling us and to support that. Um, so although I struggle. Supporting option number six because of, I, I think that. I think one of our, one of our parents sent an email that says. She said it so eloquently. I can't, I, it's not very funny, I mean, cause my, my daughter's going to read, but she said eloquently that, you know. Uh, we're just keeping up with the cost of inflation, we're just keeping up with the cost of where we're at, so. It's not excessive cost spending, it's not excessive overspending, we're. It was beautifully written, so thank you. Who wrote it, um, I'm struggling the words because I want to say no to option six, because I want. More, except for the educators and our administrators are telling us. Again, as Jen said, it's a compromise. Um, safety, security, social work, the programs that we've. Must haves and prioritizations, I think we're, we hit the nail on the head, we're real aligned with that. And then Jen did reiterate that the four para educators aren't eliminating positions and there are vacancies that are not filled currently. Um, I think the only thing that we need to be cognizant of is if we have a situation that's required. That a para educator is required, then we're legally obligated to fill that position for that respective situation. So if that in fact is the case, then, um. I'll wait till you guys are done.
Sorry.
So, um. But we're legally obligated to backfill that position if it is needed.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, um, I should have clarified last week, but I was under the weather, but, uh, in our must haves. And prioritizations, the two FTE SROs, I know it's something that we all want, um. But right now, we've got funding in the budget for one FTE SRO. So is this, are we adding? Is the total budget for three SROs?
No, this would be two.
Okay.
Me too, one, the one you have, number one.
Okay, so, I feel like the increase would only be one then, right?
Well, this was the way it was described. Yes, it's just the way it was described is, it's a must have, so don't get rid of the SROs, you know, we must have two, two.
Got it, so. Okay, perfect, but I mean, yeah, the rounds were great, it was good to hear from the source in our, we're here to see what. Is a need versus a want, but, I mean, I know we're charged to provide what the ski school, like, needs to flourish here, um. But, yeah, I just feel like we're gonna have to continuously circle back because these must haves are. We're starting at a point right now where it's just, it's at a level that. If we propose it, we're gonna have to circle back, it's exceedingly frustrating, starting here, so I couldn't agree more with Phil that. Just, it's unfortunate, we're starting here, cause it's, it's just, I don't see it going anywhere either, um, but. It's unfortunate, cause I'd obviously like to keep as much as possible for the students, but it has to stop at some point. Um, and this is just looking historically, it's great to say what we think we need, um, but these must haves are just gonna. End up circling back to being de-prioritized at some way, in my personal opinion, but we'll see. Katie.
I had to agree that it's not a sufficient budget, I don't think anybody in the room thinks it's the budget that we'd like to have. I think it's a pretty fair compromise and I don't know, I'm not really willing to. Get rid of too much before we're sort of forced to start really. You know. I'm not willing to get rid of anything else at this time. That's all, thanks.
So, yeah, so my thoughts, you know, it's, it's been a long week, you've talked to a whole lot of people. Uh, and, and one of the questions, I guess, they, they keep coming back, you know, it's been, this is what our six. Budget, uh, four of which are right there, and, uh, you know, I think for at least four of those, I pounded the table and said. You know, look under every rock, I know we can find another penny under there, we can drop this, we can drop this. Uh, and, and, you know, it's, it's, I hope you've seen or may not have over this year, you know, that, that stance softened a bit. And the question I think that I got more often than not, with many of our, my, my friends and coworkers, was, you know, what changed? And how did you go from pounding that to being, you know, turning to Dr. Willet and saying, okay, I want to see it all on the team? That, that came down to eleven point one percent. You know, and, and, you know, I can go into the same things, a, a lot of people have said, you know, the instructional rounds were great. Uh, I've also had the opportunity of having a child move from, you know, Birch Grove up to TIS. So I saw that, that new perspective outside of, you know, Mr. Swanson or. But more often, or more than, let me back up, there, there's also been, you know, increased discussions, you know, with Dr. Willet and with the, uh, the other king. Of board chairs on various topics that have, you know, approach, at a town, approaching the states. But, but really the, the thing that did it, and I keep coming back to it, was meeting a young man in instructional round. That, that absolutely changed my perspective on a lot of things. As an engineer, the engineering pathway, you know, when it came to talent, yeah, we have an engineering pathway, that's funded with many kids since we can through STEM. And we'll be happy on the other side, uh. I've got four children, three of which are non-technical. And I have an artist, I have a teacher, and I have one that wants to be a professional hockey player. She's, she's working on it, she's working on it. Uh, but my, my point being that. You know, having that in my head and trying to work through. Educating and raising non-technical people from my technical, had, had its own challenges. And I meet this young man whose life absolutely flipped around because he found something outside of the technical world in, in his thing. And for me. Pathways gives us an opportunity to do that. You know, we, we've got to take. Pathways for engineers is great, pathways for business is great, but there's a whole segment of our community that don't get addressed by that, we end up funding them into that. Increasing pathways is a way to, to enhance that. And, and going back, I firmly believe, uh, I. I understand and to some points agree with what, what many of you had said, as far as the budget that goes before refereeing against path, like. Recognizing these are difficult times and that. All priorities have to be made. And in no way do I envy the council for that responsibility. They have to decide. Uh, I have the utmost faith in council leadership, I think that Chairman Mari and Councilman Moran. Are great minds and, and will do everything they can to, to weigh our, our challenges and our, our needs. With the rest of the town, the, the council will deliver and they will make that decision. Uh, so my perspective is, I think it's important that we give them that whole picture. That we say, this is what we need, now I hold it within your rights and your, your ability to make that decision. That's my comment. The vote. Dan, next.
We're voting on option six?
Option six, yeah. I'm an eye. Bill?
Next.
Brian?
Next.
Rainy?
Next.
Kate?
Fine.
Katie?
Alright.
Dr. Willet? Option six. Button it up, who prepared for the council, please? All right, moving on, public participation. Again, comments, please, they must be limited, two items on this agenda. Raise your hand, your zoom hand, and we will. Identify you, please, start your name and your address for the minutes, and Dr. Willet will run the timer as he does. Done. If you'd like to speak, now is your chance. Oh, there we go, uh, Jennifer?
Good evening, my name is Jennifer McCarty, I live at two thirty seven Colesley Road. For full disclosure, I'm also a board of ed employee, I'm a para educator. It is disheartening to see the elimination of four pairs on this budget. While I'm happy that you voted to not further reduce Dr. Willet's proposed budget, to see four pairs eliminated. Eliminated is disheartening, pairs support all students K through twelve. In classrooms and intervention, and of course, our special ed students. Elimin- elimination of four para educators, while it may create a temporary budget solution, it will not, it will not be sustainable in the long term. Referrals for students who need intervention and special ed are rapidly rising. And it's only a matter of time before these positions will need to be filled with qualified people, not temps. Talon's practice of hiring temps is not the answer. It's not an answer to throw a body in there. Talon has spent sixty thousand dollars to date employing temps. That money should have been spent to invest in the dedicated qualified staff. That Talon already has, in hot, used to hire. Pairs at a living wage, cause currently our starting pay for pairs is twenty cents, twenty-two cents above minimum wage. Talon, para educators. Make it possible, they make everything run in a school, they make your kids clubs, recesses. Intervention, special ed, IEPs, five oh fours. Pairs make it possible. To see four para positions eliminated, even though it's the, an unfilled position, is very disheartening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, uh, comments? Discussions? Seeing none, we will close public participation, points of interest, uh, would anybody from the board like to speak?
I've never cried in this room, I don't think. So I'm not gonna start today. I'd like to say that everything that Ms. McCarty just said is absolutely the truth. As I briefly stated, I do believe that the parents are the heart of our school. I do believe that we should not be eliminating any of those positions. I understand the, um, concerns of the people in this room. Who disagree with me. Someone which I respect very much. I do believe my role here is to say what we need, and I'm not even doing that at this point, this is a compromise. So I do hope that you understand that, I understand your position, I hope you understand mine. You know. There's been a lot on social media. And I'm not on the group pages anymore. But there are some really negative things being said. That were liars, that were propagandists. It's the same group of people. And I, I guess I'll stop there categorizing what group of people they are, but it's the same group of people. My family sees those comments. My children see those comments, not all of my children, but I do have an adult child as well. It's incorrect and it's really disrespectful. I give my whole heart to this position. Maybe that's not right, maybe some people don't agree with me, there's certainly better numbers people here, I give my whole heart to this position. I am doing this because I believe in what I'm doing right now, and I don't enjoy it. I hate budget and I hate letting go of anyone or anything for our kids, I do. Dr. Willet is constantly criticized on social media. He, I am here because I support our staff. And I don't think anyone in this room or anyone who voted for me doubts that. Dr. Willet is also our staff, our superintendent is our staff, our BOE office is our staff. Um, to, I don't know who people are calling liar and propagandist, I don't know if it's me, I don't know if it's Democrats, I don't know if it's Dr. Willet, maybe it's all three. It's wrong. Almost all the, I think all of our information is posted. We have an FAQ sheet that the community can fill out and get answered by our superintendent. We had a community budget workshop where all of our administrators from our schools and our departments were there to answer community questions and a handful of people went. We have rounds available to board members, we have, Dr. Willet posts his cell phone number. Contracts are being questioned, they're online, enrollment is being questioned, it's online. I can't even think of everything, it's all online. I don't know how, uh, line items are in the back of this budget book for each school. I don't know how much more transparent we can be. Ask the question. If there's something that you don't have, ask the question. Stop attacking us as people and human beings. We are making hard decisions. Hearing Ms. McCarty's comment is extremely hard for me to hear, and she's right. I think we all should respect each other and I think we should support each other. And I don't think that we should allow people to talk about us this way. And I will do it to any of you.
Any other comments? I have, I've just one, and that. So, as mentioned during, during my, my comments earlier, you know, to. The council, to the council members that are watching, watching this or were reading the minutes. I, I want to open up, uh, opportunities to discuss. Uh, we have a public meeting coming up, a group meeting between the two, uh, that I think can be incredibly productive. I've seen some email traffic from, I believe, two or three counters, uh, with some questions. We'll make sure that those answers, if they're not already posted, uh, can be posted. Uh, you know, we, we, we don't. At least I don't hand this to you, uh, just talk to the wall, I, I recognize that. There are questions and there are answers that you'll be looking for and then that we're, we're here to. Uh, so that the council can make the best decision for, for Talon, so please. Take advantage of this. Also, in line of kids, a happy birthday to, to your child tomorrow, any other birthdays we may have coming to them. That being said, uh, Dr. Willet, you wanna hit the future?
I'm just gonna put in another plug for, um, instructional rounds, uh, the. The next one is gonna be at Birch Grove, I highly recommend it, it really is, uh, going into, it's actually also talking about MTSS and tiered supports. So, um, you, you can sign up. So, um, you, you can sign up on the Board of Ed dashboard, there's a signup for all of these. Uh, and I just really encourage you to sign up for our March offerings. And then the one, I think you'll really enjoy May too, if you're able to make it. So these are excellent ways of getting into the school, seeing the program and getting a good sense of. Um, you know, how, how things are running and, you know, where the, the money goes and all that type of thing. It, it really is a great opportunity to get a perspective that it's difficult to get, um, without being involved and getting into the school.
Um, TMS says to be determined, are you thinking that's Aprilish?
TMS?
Topic Unified Arts Intervention MTSS to, to be determined. Mine says TV day, sorry.
I, I'm, I'm sure, I'm looking at one that says it's March twenty, it's, it says, um.
I'm just checking.
It's okay, there's something that's, um.
Mine says TV.
It's March for you.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion to adjourn, so.
Second.
Dan? Hi. Dana?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Uh, Bill?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Jaden?
Aye.
Eddie?
Aye.
Thank you all, have a great night, safe day.